I will call the May 3, 2010, meeting of the Anchorage Planning and Zoning Commission to order. Would the Secretary call the roll, please?
Nancy Pease?
Here.
Jim Frederick? Connie Yoshimura?
Here.
Tony Jones?
Here.
Arthur Ischam?
Here.
John Weddleton?
Here.
Bruce Phelps? Stacy Dean?
Here.
Terry Parks?
We have a quorum. The next order of business is our minutes for February 8, 2010. Those were, I believe, emailed as well as laid on the table this evening.
Madam Chair, move for approval of the minutes, February 8, 2010, of the Planning and Zoning Commission?
Okay. Are there any corrections? Seeing, hearing none, a motion would be in order?
It's in.
No, I need to... Well, just a minute, I'm running a little bit behind here. At least I'm here. Okay, and I have a motion, it's been seconded. Is there any objection? Hearing none, those minutes are approved. Okay, the next order of business on our agenda are disclosures. Mr. Ischam?
Ms. Pease, do you have anything to disclose this evening?
Nothing to disclose.
Ms. Yoshimura?
Just a point of information, I would like to acknowledge that I am a client of First National Bank of Alaska, but that I have no relationship to this particular plat.
Okay, and that number, what number is that?
Case S-11143-3. Also, I am a client of the petitioner's representative, but again, I have no interest in this particular case.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Jones?
I don't have any particular conflicts, but I do want to point, make note on the record, under case 4B, in the past, I have abstained from anything that related to Acclutna because the law firm I worked for represented Siri, which had, there was a connection here because Siri had an interest in the gravel that was in the, subject to the conditional use. But I no longer work for that law firm, I've never done work for Acclutna, so I think the commission, I would ask for the commission to decide whether or not I should participate. And, by the way, to the best of my knowledge, even when I was working for the law firm that represented Siri, it never had anything to do with any of this.
We need a positive motion directing Ms. Jones to participate? Okay, fine, we got Ms. Yoshimura made the motion, seconded by Mr. Weddleton. Basically, a yes vote, well, let's see, is there any objection? Okay, so you will participate.
Yes.
Welcome back to the world of Acclutna. Anything else, Ms. Jones?
No, there's nothing else that I'm aware of.
Okay, Ms. Dean?
On item 4A, which is case number 2010-055, the Marinusco Electric Association, the petitioner's representative, which is Arc Tera Consulting, is a company that is representing the other party in a lawsuit that I'm involved in right now, so don't think I should hear that case.
And, I'm sorry, which one was that again?
2010-055, which is 4A.
Okay.
Okay, so you basically, there's a law firm, or a firm that you're involved with that's involved in a lawsuit that involves you?
There's a lawsuit that I'm in, that I'm one of the parties to.
Okay.
And Arc Tera is the surveying firm that is, that worked with the other party in the lawsuit.
Okay, why? I think you may have a conflict there, so let's have a positive motion directing...
I'd move for Mr. Dean to participate in case 4D? Which one?
Okay. 4A. Sorry, 4A. It's been seconded by Ms. Yoshimura. Do you want to speak to your motion?
Well, I understand there is a conflict here that could be significant. Also, point out that then we'd only have five up here, which would be relevant to the petitioner, but I would support the motion.
Are you supporting it, that she is directed to participate?
I'm sorry, I oppose it.
You oppose it, okay. Any other comments?
I also will be opposing the motion.
Okay, so since there is opposition, we'll have to use our machines. A yes vote directs Ms. Dean to participate, and a no vote, she will not. Please vote using your machines. Okay, Ms. Dean, you are excused from that particular case. Do you have anything else to disclose? Okay, and Ms. Jones, we need to keep an eye on that because we only have five of us for that particular one.
Right. Will do.
Okay, Mr. Weddleton?
No disclosures.
And I have no disclosures.
Okay. Before we move on to the consent agenda, I want to make an, or to the rest of our agenda, I want to make an announcement, and that has to do with our, in connection with our first public hearing case, G1. The petitioner is Alaska Industrial Hardware, Inc., case number 2010-002. That case has been postponed to our June 7, 2010, meeting. Our agenda says it's postponed indefinitely, but I've been advised by the secretary that it is postponed to our June 7, 2010, meeting, for those of you that may have come out for Okay, the next item on our agenda this evening is an information item, and this is case number 2010-049. It's, the petitioner's municipality of Anchorage, PMNE. It's a design study report for a public roadway, and it's a review for the 32nd Avenue road improvements between Muldoon Road and Brookridge Drive. It's in the scenic Foothills Community Council area. There's no action required by the commission, we will not be discussing it tonight. If you have any comments about this project, individual commissioners can contact PMNE and submit their comments to them. This is just a submittal to us for our information. Now we move on to the consent agenda, and a motion for approval of the consent agenda would be in order.
And Madam Chair?
And someone will need to pull 4A, since Ms. Dean has been excused from that matter. Okay.
Yes, Madam Chair, move for approval of the consent agenda items D1A through I, and 4A and B.
Are you pulling 4A?
Okay, and we need, I need my machine cleared.
Um, on your floor?
Okay, that's been, motion made by Mr. Ischam, and seconded by John Weddleton. Okay, I see Mr. Weddleton in the queue, do you wish to pull something?
Did you include D4A?
No, yes, we did include...
Okay, so I pulled that.
You pulled that, okay.
And I had another comment, too, that...
Something else to pull?
Not something to pull.
Okay.
Should I wait?
Yes, please.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to pull D1B, E, and G, and D4B.
And what was the first one you pulled?
1B, as in boy.
Okay. Mr. Weddleton, was your comment on one of the other ones that's up for approval without any, without being pulled? Okay, you may go ahead.
Well, it's a fairly general comment, it was, just looking at these, we have one, 2009-032, that was from July of 2009, and another one, the 2009-036, is from, also over a year ago. So it just surprises me that it's, we've had these sitting out there for so long, and I don't think any of these would have held up any projects, but it does worry me that they're not getting to us quicker, and hope they don't cause problems.
Okay, well, maybe we can get some sort of an idea at our next directors' meeting, how many of these old ones we have outstanding? Because I know sometimes we get a backlog, and you've been trying to whittle through them, but if we, from each division, if we could get an idea of what might be outstanding, that would be helpful. Okay, any objection to the remaining items that have not been pulled? Hearing none, the remainder of the consent agenda is approved. D1B, Ms. Pease?
Yes, this is the freight shed in the Alaska Railroad area of Ship Creek, and I did, I should say first, I forwarded some concerns on a couple of these to staff, and then I had problems getting online this afternoon, so I don't know if they've responded to me, but in this case, I was curious about our finding eight, which, in which the commission said that we didn't think there should be any money spent for pedestrian amenities going up Cordova Street, and I pulled the minutes of January 5, 2009, and I did not find that anywhere in the minutes. So I don't know if staff did the same cross-check. And I've got the minutes here with me.
Through the chair?
Yes.
Ms. Pease, staff did receive your email this morning and responded this morning. Staff's fine with deleting that finding that's at issue, finding number eight in that resolution. Just deleting it is fine.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Ischam.
But my question is, how in the world did that extraneous stuff get in there as our words when it wasn't even in the minutes?
Through the chair, Mr. Ischam, I don't have an answer for that, this is not something that myself or anyone on the panel worked on, I'll just forward your concern to the person who did.
Okay, well, I'd like at the next meeting, I'd like to know why and how that snuck in there, because I don't like people putting words in our mouths.
You know, it's odd, but I think I remember there being some discussion to that effect, and whether or not it got in our minutes. I have a recollection of there being a discussion about Cordova Street.
Yeah.
And the steepness of it. Maybe we need to go back and listen to the tape.
Madam Chair, I remember, I think you were the one who was commenting on Cordova Street, but I did look at the minutes, and I didn't find, didn't find it here, so I agree, I think there was some disagreement on whether Cordova Street would ever be suitable or not, but I just didn't find it in the minutes, so...
But if it's not in the minutes?
In the minutes.
Yeah, then we need to take it out.
Tony?
Yes?
I remember the discussion as well, but it might not have been in the actual findings, it might have just been in the discussion about the case, but not when you got down to the findings, it might have not been part of the findings, which then wouldn't make it in the resolution.
No, but it should have been in the minutes.
Yeah.
And so I'm thinking maybe the minutes weren't...
I don't know, we'll go back and check them, I do remember a lot of discussion on that particular case.
Yeah.
But we can check for you.
Well, it's on the floor, and Nancy brought it up, so we need to resolve it one way or another.
Well, if it's...
She has the lead.
If we want to just dispense with this, since it's, over a year since it was approved, then the consistent thing to do would be to go with the printed, consistent, make it consistent with the printed minutes and take it out.
Right.
And then I would leave it up to you to direct whether we need to have staff check the tapes.
I think in this instance, not, I think we just need to be more vigilant ourself in the future.
All right.
And the reality is, there'll probably not be any improvements put up Cordova Street because it's too hazardous.
All right, then I move for approval of the resolution number 2009-036, with the deletion of finding eight.
Okay, is there any, we need a seconder for that motion, and, thank you, Mr. Ischam, is there any objection to that motion? Hearing none, that is approved as amended. Okay, and the next is 4E, oh, I'm sorry, 1E, Ms. Pease?
Yes, this is the buffer landscaping requirements for the childcare facilities, which we endorsed. The question I had with this, finding number five was not grammatical, and Ms. O'Brien made some proposed changes to it, which were on the table. But the other question I had about it is, according to my notes, and I don't have the minutes of this meeting in front of me, but according to my notes, we made some proposed changes to the language of the ordinance, and that's, that's not reflected here. If you look at B, it says recommends the approval of the amendments, and that would be, I assume, the assembly's version, but again, going by my notes from that meeting, we added language that if a childcare center is on a site where it is not the primary use, we added that, and we added language that clarified landscaping will be unnecessary because the lot size is sufficiently large in relation to use and will not create a high impact at the lot perimeter abutting residential district. And that's kind of reflected in finding five, but it's not reflected in our recommend, recommendation of approval.
Through the chair, Ms. Pease, I can forward your concerns to the planner that worked on this case?
Okay.
I think we just need...
We need to, we need to, so Madam Chair, I move that we postpone final approval of 2010-010, and ask staff to ascertain if we in fact approved the Anchorage Assembly amendment with our own amended wording, which I think we did.
Okay, is there, is there a second? You need to use your machine, Ms. Pease, thank you, Mr. Ischam. Is there objection to postponing that? Hearing none, that'll be postponed and come back on a future agenda. Okay, Ms. Pease, your last one is G.
Let's see, G is the water tank. Let me find that one. When we, we, we're approving this without, without the minutes, but Ms. Graves did try to email me the minutes, draft minutes, which I didn't get, but I have a copy of them in front of me, and my concern here is that doesn't look quite like what we passed. What I think's missing is specifically the finding, the concern about the prompt gravel cleanup, we made a specific comments, Ms. Jones actually made the comments, that this is a concern because there are student drivers and student bikers spinning around these corners, so I think that should be in the findings, and in addition, if you look at condition four, the last sentence now reads, "All construction activity shall comply with AMC 2480." We did not, we did not cite municipal code when we made that condition, so that was added in, and likewise, under condition nine, we didn't cite all those codes and specific standards, so this version isn't quite what we passed, and that's, I guess, if staff sees a need to clarify a resolution, so be it that, I would think that staff would present its clarifications to us for approval, and this is not what we passed in conditions four and nine.
Okay, and how do you wish to proceed, Ms. Pease?
I guess probably the right thing to do would be to have this come back with our minutes, so that all the staff, all of the commissioners can look at both the minutes and the resolution, and in the interim, staff should look at it likewise and make sure that the wording reflects what we passed, and if these standards, performance standards should be added in, I'm amenable to that, but it should be clear that that's how staff wants to clarify it.
Okay, Mr. McLaughlin?
Madam Chair, Ms. McLaughlin pressed the machine for me, I didn't have mine turned on, just a quick explanation. Yes, I'd be happy to add the remarks regarding trackout into the findings, but under the conditions, number four, it was just more succinct to cite the correct code section for right-of-way regarding construction trackout, and who is responsible for cleaning it up, and how quickly they must clean it up, and how they can be fined by the municipality. Rather than just running through all of what the commission had said, the AMC 2480045 covers all of that. Similar with condition number nine, the commission made many references to activated lighting and so on and so forth, so all of these little pieces that are in condition number nine are the code summation of those concerns about lighting, activated cameras, activated lighting, and so forth.
Okay, Mr. Weddleton?
Well, that, I guess that was kind of my thought, that if staff thinks of a way to make what we kind of carry our intent for it, but in a way that, you know, takes existing code and phrases it that way, I'm okay with it, you know, not that I could say I could read this and say that 24.80.0450, as I trusted that it meant it would be cleaned up like we said, so I think a lot of times we put conditions on things that are probably already part of code, so...
Well, yeah, maybe this is okay, I'll just, it's just two sentences from the minutes, these are draft minutes that Ms. Graves printed out for me to look at. Commissioner Pease proposed a friendly amendment to resolve through planning a condition that would not allow any steadily operating floodlights. Commissioner Phelps concurred on the condition that it was subject to the planning department's final determination, and I guess I took that to mean that it would be worded that no steady floodlights unless planning department finds them necessary.
Right.
So instead, it came back with...
That's the thing.
...the need for motion activated security lights, and planning's already put in the standards that it wants. Now, if it's close enough for you, then...
I think that last, the last two sentences in paragraph nine, I think are, you know, address it, where it says, "No constant on area lighting is allowed, and prior to construction, AWU shall submit a site lighting plan," include, you know, that includes the fixtures, "but they are not allowed to have any constant lighting on this site."
Okay, I think you're right, I think that, I think that does it, I guess I got confused a little bit with the lead-in sentences, so I'm fine with it if we, we'd then move to pass it, to approve it with the one addition in the findings of the, taken from the minutes, that loose gravel is a special concern because of student drivers and student bikers using the bike paths in intersection.
Okay, would, and is there a second, Mr., thank you, Mr. Weddleton? Is there any objection to approving it with the one addition? Hearing none, that is approved. Then we move on to Mr. Weddleton for 4A, and Ms. Dean, you don't need to leave your seat just for the census, the consent agenda item, you just don't participate. You have the floor, Mr. Weddleton.
All right, bumbling around here, trying to find this thing, here, 4A, okay. I would simply move to approve case number 2010-055.
And I need a second?
Can you have the short form for that?
Okay, Mr. Ischam seconded, Mr. Weddleton?
I guess maybe I should add, with the department recommendations included. There is something on here that, reading this carefully, that I, just through emails with staff, I probably wouldn't make a big deal about it, but it's a little lesson on when we word these things, back in 1981, it said that, "All construction improvements to the subject property connected with this conditional use shall be completed within 18 months of the date of this approval, or this conditional use shall expire." Well, the pole barn was one of the improvements shown back then, so it wasn't done, so this conditional use expired. Now, there's been a number of modifications over the years, so no one paid attention to that, but technically, the way this is worded, there is no conditional use here, so this makes it fairly major.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
The 18-month reference is just straight out of the code, I don't know why they were emphasizing it back then and not now. Mr. Weddleton, would you reference in the staff report again where you were reading?
It's page 27, lower right-hand corner, item eight.
All construction improvements.
Through the chair, Mr. Weddleton, you know, that's something that staff didn't see, that you found in reviewing, thank you for sending your comments to us, and after looking at it, the planning department found that the intent of the condition was met as all the other structures and building was completed, with the exception of the pole barn. This happened in the 80s, the documentation's not really good, but to the best of our ability, it looks like everything was completed with that conditional use, except for the pole barn, which meets the intent of that condition. This minor amendment to the existing conditional use to construct the pole barn will take care of all of this and make it all better.
Right, and I'll support my motion to approve this, and I'll put in the findings. Right, and I'll support my motion to approve this, and I'll put in the findings. Basically that.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. All right, and we do, I do see your motion in the queue, and it's been seconded by Mr. Eishem. Any further discussion?
Do I need to restate that, or did you get enough of that from Mr. McLaughlin?
I think it'd be good if you restated it since you made the motion.
Okay, well, I'd like to just offer in the findings that, reaching back to the original resolution for this conditional use in 1981, Condition 8 stated that "all construction and improvements would be completed within 18 months or this conditional use shall expire." So technically, without this pole barn, one could say they had expired, however, the intent of that conditional use was met, and the approval of this pole barn and its construction will meet those requirements.
Okay, is there any objection? Hearing none, that is approved. Okay, now we move on, we're not done. We have Ms. Pease, 4B.
Yes, Madam Chair. This is an amendment to allow rock crushing at a natural resource extraction site. And staff's recommended approval, and I would like to tighten it up a little bit, I guess, for the protection of the community, since there have been noise complaints to date. I would like to add the finding that there have been noise complaints. These are referenced in a letter from Birchwood Community Council that's in our packet, signed by Bobby Wells. And then the request, which is on page 2 of our packet, has several requirements of conditional use. I would like to put Condition number 3, which specifically requires a three-sided barrier around the rock crusher, and a three-sided barrier directed north toward the airport and railroad, and a maximum 60 decibel noise level at the property, and if that can't be maintained...
We don't have a, you didn't make a motion, Ms. Pease.
Sorry. Okay.
Sorry.
I guess you should make a motion.
Yes.
Sorry.
And if I could clarify, is that a friendly amendment then, or what are you...
This is a motion to approve the, and with additional findings and amendments by the commission. Shall I take up where I left off?
Anne, it's been seconded by Mr. Eishem. And Mr. Barrett, are you back in the queue for this? Okay, we're gonna, if you could just wait a minute, Ms. Pease, Mr. Barrett?
Madam Chair, just for the record, yes, there are complaints mentioned in the community council letter, but there are no complaints logged in with code enforcement regarding this property. That was all, thank you.
Okay. You may continue, Ms. Pease. And you need to state it in the form of a motion?
All right, I will start, start over then. In the matter of case 2010-058, the minor amendment to the conditional use permit for natural resource extraction, I move approval as recommended by staff, but with the following additional finding and two additional conditions. The finding is to incorporate, and I won't give the exact words, but to incorporate the noise complaints noted in a letter from Birchwood Community Council to the planning staff regarding this case. And the additional conditions would be to add as a specific condition, item number 3, which is on page 2 of our packet, which generally describes a three-sided barrier, a maximum 60 decibel noise level at the property line, and the promise to discontinue the crusher if that 60 decibel level can't be maintained. And then, an additional condition would be to put basically the continuous feed noise monitors, as requested by Birchwood Community Council's letter, at the property line and on the property lines of any neighbors who assert a noise complaint. And this noise data, the recorded levels of noise, would be submitted monthly to the municipality or at intervals requested by the community council and resolved with staff. And that's my motion.
Are you back in the queue, Mr. Barrett?
No, ma'am.
Okay, I just neglected to remove you. Is there, Mr. Weddleton?
Actually, a question, I may also add something. One is now, would the continuous feed noise monitor, and you stated that that would be at any property that might have a noise complaint?
Yeah, I'm open to friendly amendments on that, but the concern expressed in the letter here is that there appear to be places where terrain or local conditions amplify the noise or create noise greater than at the property line.
Did you see the letter that was laid on the table tonight, Ms. Pease?
No, I did not see that.
Okay, why don't you stand down for a minute? This, there's a letter in here, there's some additional materials in here.
I think it looks like a repeat of what was in our packet.
Yeah, that one's in our packet, there is an additional comment.
But there's some additional comments. I just wanted to make sure.
Madam Chair, the papers I have have a page 2 signed by Mr. Potter, but not page 1.
Not page 1, yes, me too.
I think that was, my taking on that, it was provided by Ms. Wells to give us background, but I might be wrong on that. We could ask.
Our packet has page 1. Page 1's on page 7 of our packet.
Oh, okay.
Okay, is there any further, Mr. Weddleton? Okay, you can go ahead.
Well, my concern on the continuous feed noise monitors, I don't know what that is, and I don't know how they work, and I don't know how much it would cost. And then I'd also would consider, we had, when this first came to us, discussion of the overlapping berm, and there was concern that without an overlapping berm, we would have the problem that's stated here with noise funneling through. So I'd offer a friendly amendment to also require construction of an overlapping berm at the gravel access site road. That was hotly contested by the petitioner's representative when we stated this, and I would like to ask, if you could restate this, can we do that since Mr. Potter is here?
Yes, you can, you can certainly ask him a question.
To maybe briefly discuss the current situation with the overlapping berm. Let's be clauding, I guess.
Briefly. Is your microphone on?
Where?
You have no microphone. Mr. Potter, if you have no microphone, I've, we'll move one over there for you. We're not going to silence you that much.
I didn't get you.
Gotcha.
Can the clerk hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Madam Chair, members of the commission, my name is Tim Potter, representing Granite Construction Tonight and Acclutney, Inc. We did have a very good meeting with the community council this week, and Ms. Bobby Wells is here in the audience. I believe that the letter that was laid on the table actually represents that having a 24/7 monitor all the time may not tell you everything that you want to know, because with the shooting range, binar builders with their factory out there where there's nail guns going off all the time, and the railroad going by, and the airport, that those peak noise events may be difficult off of a printout to identify what was going on. So in the discussion with the community council, Granite, and Granite is represented here tonight, as is Acclutney, that they are going to go rent a 24/7 noise recorder and monitoring system, and put it out there and get some time before the cone crusher goes online and before the operation starts up again this year, and then do the same thing once the cone crusher is online, so that we can analyze not just the sound at the property line, but we can take it to other areas and see what's going on, and then come up with a solution. In the discussions with the community council, we looked at the possibility of the overlapping berm, but because of where the driveway is and the location and the turning radiuses, that would require that there be a significant amount of the fiber optic cable that's out around the roadway to be re-excavated and re, I guess relocated from a depth standpoint to do that. So we went out and looked at the possibility of putting in a solid wood, double-sided noise barrier fence, like was recently put around Northern Lights Boulevard, as an opportunity to try and take the area that's at the end of the train rail siding and kind of horseshoe encompass that, and then look at adding some additional material to the gates that are there across the driveway. That would be sound interrupters, and that while the area's operating, that the gate would actually physically be closed. So those were some of the things that we were looking at, and we think that we'll have a better idea of what a solution is once we do the work that we've committed to do for the community council, go back to the community council and come up with a resolution. And, you know, we'd be happy to come back to you once we get this thing going and come up with a recommendation on what the appropriate approach is.
Okay. I think we have maybe some more questions. You were in the queue, Ms. Yoshimura, did you get your question answered?
No, not exactly. I'm, I have a procedural question in terms of, if staff can explain to me what the threshold is between a consent agenda item and one that goes for a public hearing.
Madam Chair, technically, if you're going to open up, you need to pull it from the consent agenda, and we would have to advertise it for a public hearing. If we're going to start taking extensive input rather than just a few explanatory statements, we might be getting a little too deep.
And so what if we wanted to hear from Ms. Wells?
You're turning it into a public hearing, yes, I would say. This is an up-down yes-no vote, we'll pull it.
Ah.
I don't want to get into your procedural discussions, I'll obviously...
And that would be a good thing. Well, we pulled it off the consent agenda, and we often take things off the consent agenda to ask questions, or to ask a petitioner a question, or sometimes someone else. And, and Mr. Barrett, the commission has, and it can, at its discretion, ask anyone for information at any time, regardless of whether it's a public hearing item or a consent agenda item or whatever. And if, at any time, we do feel a matter is serious enough that it requires a public hearing, we can decide to set it over for a public hearing. But if we feel like we can dispense with this now as a consent agenda item, and the commissioners wish to ask other people that are present that might have historical knowledge about the issues in the community, there's nothing, there's no reason why we couldn't ask those people questions and still have it be a consent agenda item. That would be my ruling as the chair. But we would not be setting our timer and giving people lots of minutes to testify. They wouldn't be standing up testifying, they would be reacting to very specific questions. So if there are commissioners that have questions of other people that are here, feel free to ask them. And that doesn't mean that anyone that's sitting out there has the right to come up and talk. Having said that, Mr. Weddleton, I see you, but I'm going to first acknowledge other people that haven't been in, haven't an opportunity to ask questions yet. Mr. Eishem?
Yes, Madam Chair, I have questions for Ms. Wells.
Yeah, okay, Ms. Wells, would you please come forward?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Wells, in regards to the discussions that you've had with Mr. Potter, is this concept of having this continuous noise monitoring, does that sort of satisfy your desires to determine what the initial background noise was versus what's going to happen when this cone crusher starts working? Is that kind of what you wanted to do?
The original intent was so that what happens is that we get noise after the municipality is closed for business. I want to say that Granite Construction is very responsive whenever we notify them that they're causing a disturbance. But with a continuous monitor, we think that that was something that could be utilized, then we couldn't get someone from code enforcement if we needed to, or I think it's DHHS that monitors noise. We have no way of doing that. I don't know if I'm qualified to operate a noise monitor. I suppose I could learn, but with advanced days, you sometimes write instructions and forget. And the instance that Commissioner Pease was referring to was an evil-type situation, and this is what we're up against, and it appears to be related directly to down a Louisville Street halfway, it'd be the Third House on the right. A noise monitor, continuous feed noise monitor was all that I could come up with at the time. There may be, if they had, if Granite paid for a firm, a business firm, or it freed one of the employees to use that, and would be available after hours, that might sell it. And if anyone else has a suggestion, as my knowledge of it myself, it would help. But this is one of the things that after 4 o'clock in the afternoon, we have no one except ourselves in Granite to rely on, which is fine, because we try to deal with things internally and not bring the municipality into this.
So, again, the question is, if this continuous noise monitor gets set in place, this satisfies your concerns?
This would satisfy my concerns as long as, yes, it would. Just tell them when we're going to set it. That is the qualifier.
Okay, well, you've answered my question. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, Ms. Yoshimura.
I would just carry your microphone.
Is your microphone on? I don't know if it's...
I don't know if it's appropriate, but I'm curious to see how many more people there are in the audience that are, have an interest in this consent agenda item. If they could raise their hand. Okay, all right. Thank you. I guess, would this noise monitoring then be done by whom? I mean, I don't think it's the responsibility of the neighborhood to do this, I think it's the responsibility of the petitioner.
I believe that Mr., I think it was said that the company was going to hide, was going to rent this thing, so they would provide it, the neighborhood would not. I think that's what Mr. Potter said.
And...
Is he wearing it?
Mr. Potter's talking to someone else.
Okay. So it would be nice to... No, exactly.
Okay. Do you wish to ask that question of Mr. Potter?
Yes.
What was the question? I'm sorry, I was up talking to the staff, suggesting it might be good that they let you know that the Department of Health and Human Services is there, their noise specialist to answer specific questions or help you work through this if you had questions. What was your question?
Ms. Yoshimura had a question.
Who's going to be monitoring this? Is this a company-monitored device?
The 24-hour, seven-day-a-week.
Yes.
It actually records the information digitally, and then can be taken out and downloaded into a computer, and those graphs can be put out, and it'll give you, you know, when, when the decibels will go out, and through that 24-hour, seven-day-a-week pattern. It would be, it's a suggestion as we talked about, was doing it before the operation started, and then after the operation started, so that we could, we could actually get readings while all this stuff was going on, and people would be available to figure out what was making what noise. If it were 24/7 for the term of the conditional use permit, I'm assuming that we would then transfer those, those cards to the health department, and once a month, I guess, take the cards or download, stream it to their computers, something, and see what they can do with it. I'm just not sure that it would have that much meaningful information for them to look at the chart and, and look at any spikes of noise, and they wouldn't, I don't believe they would be able to know what was from a bunch of beams being dropped at Spinnard builders, the pneumatic air guns and nails, a 185 with a prop turned out, somebody shooting a 50-caliber sniper rifle at Isaac Walton. I just don't think that without having a physical person out there to identify what those peak noises are, I don't know how that data does you any good unless you scientifically go out there and really review it beforehand and then after. And Granite has made every effort so far to do as much as they possibly can. Remember, this is industrial zone property, the city's requirement is at the decibel level not be higher than 60 dBs when it leaves the property. All the tests that have been done to date show that it's down in the 42 to 45 range at the property line. So it's tough for us to be under this kind of scrutiny when the people directly next door are running their forklifts with backup beepers during all the times of their operations, early in the morning and in the evening, and they are not being scrutinized, and yet we may be getting blamed for noise that they're creating. The powered equipment at Granite site on Acclunah's property, the backup beepers are all white noise motion detectors, and they can't be heard off-site, they can barely be heard onsite, you have to be very close to the equipment. So every effort's been made, and Granite's made the commitment to continue working with the neighbors and the community council. So our recommendation would be that you have us have the 24/7 monitoring before the operation kicks off, after the operation starts with the cone crusher, and we'll continue to work with the community council and the planning commissioner staff to resolve it. And you've got our commitment that that's what we'll do.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Mr. Potter?
Thank you.
Ms. Pease, did you have questions for Mr. Potter? Or did you, does anyone have a question for the gentleman from the Department of Health and Human Services?
Yes, I did. I do. Is there a representative from DHHS who's, works on noise enforcement? I'm right here. Thank you. Hi.
And could you state your name for the record?
Sure. My name is Janine Nessheim. I'm an environmental health specialist with DHHS. Thank you. Ms. Nessheim, if you had this data put to you, brought to you, or sent to you monthly on some sort of written, whatever, sheets recording the data spikes, how could you use that? Would that be a tool for you at DHHS to send your staff out at certain times, or would that be useful in your enforcement responsibilities? That would be able to show whether noise peaked beyond code levels. It would be very difficult to isolate what that noise was from. Even with staff out there, I'm not familiar with the area. If I wasn't able to see what was operating and other noises were occurring outside, other than directionally, it would be difficult to know what was creating that noise. There are ways that you can get the meter information from the computer, that you can listen to those segments where the peaks occur, and sometimes that's helpful. I mean, you can tell whether it's an airplane, you can tell whether it's maybe a gunshot, but, and that would be helpful. If I may, would you be able to use it to authorize your staff to go out at 6:00 PM or whenever the noise might be repeatedly occurring? Um, may I ask that? Because it seems that one of the reasons the community council is asking for this is they're concerned about noise at times when you normally don't have anybody answering the phone or available to check it. If we had, if we had issues where a number of people were complaining about the similar noises, we could alter schedules. That's definitely something that could happen. Hopefully, hopefully if something happens where there is noise being created, it can be mitigated without going to, going to the altered schedules or, I guess, point-blank absolutely, someone could go out there and take measurements, and they could set up the noise meter ourselves. We have our own digital noise meters, so we wouldn't have to rely on, on the Granite ones if, if there was a concern about the Granite ones not being up to code. So if I can try to wrap it up? Sure. But my, the gist of my question is, is a continuous monitor recording, noise recording device useful to you in enforcing the noise levels when you hear it? Yes? Okay, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Rettleton, back to you.
My original comment has evolved a bit now. So now, just to review with Commissioner Pease, and so there's a motion to approve this with the requirement that there be the 24/7 noise monitoring at property line of any property that felt they were impacted. Is that where we are now?
Yes, and, and that's what I stated and then stated. If you want to refine that further so that it's, there aren't noise monitors everywhere, I understand that could be a burden, we could monitor, refine it a little further.
I would offer an amendment, which would be to not have requirement to those noise monitoring.
We don't have a motion.
I thought we had a motion to approve.
Oh, we do. Yes. She didn't go back and make it. It just doesn't, no longer showing up.
Okay. And, and what I would do, it sounds like there's a process here to do some noise monitoring worked out by community council and the petitioner, and what I would do is perhaps make the minor amendment for one year, and then have it come back to us, so they would have time to do the monitoring and see if it works. And if it works, then it's on the consent agenda and it goes right through, and if it doesn't, then we do this again.
And so what are you proposing?
I would propose to revise the motion so that it is, a motion to approve in case 2010-058, minor amendment to a final conditional use permit for natural resource extraction, case 2008-140, resolution 2008-83 to allow a rock crusher for a term of one year. And that's offered as a friendly amendment, so.
Okay, so then my other findings are still...
There's still there.
Findings and two, two additional conditions. I would just, I would accept that.
Well, I would, I would take those conditions off. I mean, I was, if only because it sounds like that, I think to have it at every, if every neighbor said that they had a problem, that could be quite a few of those monitors.
Well, if I may, I would like to keep the finding that there have been noise complaints to date.
Findings are fine.
And then I had a condition, I wanted to incorporate the condition on page two about the three-sided barrier and the maximum 60 decibels, as stated on that page. And then with regard to the third condition, I would like to propose to modify it so that there will be the placement of this, what's called continuous feed or 24/7 noise monitor at the property line for seven days of baseline data before the crusher first operates, and then it will be placed on the property line after the crusher begins. And I would like the data to be collected for that first year. And with regard to where the monitor should be located, I would like to have a condition to specify that there be one noise monitor. If the community council and residents would like other locations to be monitored, they can make that request, but there'd be one noise monitor.
A minute, was it a minimum of one? Is that what you mean?
Well, I was following here that we didn't want to make the burden, a huge burden on Granite, the petitioner, to have noise monitors going all over the...
Right. Yeah, I thought that was, I think every property, it sounds pretty unlimited.
Yeah.
But it sounds like the, the petitioner's working with the community council, that they're coming to something that they're comfortable with, so I would...
Well, let's get the motion...
And the dollar will be submitted monthly to the DHHS.
Right, that sounds very good.
Let's get the motion cleaned up so we have something to vote on here.
All right, then. At least one noise monitor and a limited number of additional noise monitors if there seems to be a severe or frequent complaint, record of complaint.
Well, I want to remind commissioners that conditional uses are a little bit different than other cases in that we can call a conditional use back before us, we can invite petitioners to come and visit us at any time if there are problems with the conditional use, or if we get serious complaints. So sometimes it's good to try to let things work, and if they don't work, then there are a couple of avenues. They can always, code enforcement can always get involved, but we have the ability to invite petitioners to come and visit with us and to do some explaining about the problems that, you know, things that aren't working. So...
So limiting this to one year is that invitation?
That, that's exactly right. That, that's exactly right. But I am expecting when it comes back in one year that we don't, I, I'm hoping it's a little smoother going than this, because I can tell you right now, had I anticipated this level of engagement, this would have been a public hearing. In my opinion, this was misplaced as a consent agenda item, totally misplaced, and should have been a public hearing. And I don't expect to see any more like this on the consent agenda. So, any further comments? Mr. Isham?
Yes. As I understand Ms. Pease's motion, you're not holding anything up, you're allowing them to do the work this year with the monitors in place, and so Granite can continue their, their efforts at that location.
Yes, that's the intent of the motion.
Okay. I don't want to hold anybody hostage.
I do not want to hold anybody up or hold any one hostage, but this take is misplaced on the consent agenda. Mr. Barrett?
Madam Chair, thank you. With all respect, the item is on the consent agenda because all the turmoil that has been experienced tonight has come up since the agenda was published and the item was routed. There was just no time to change it again and do a public hearing. What we had before us at the time of the application, and by the time everything went out, no complaints, didn't look like there were going to be any issues. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Madam Chair, the one part of the motion that I did not restate, and I'm not sure where we left it, was the resolving the noise barriers at the entry driveway. Has there been any further amendment to the motion on that?
You know, I, I did not add that because it sounded like they're working through a process that may lead to that, and I would think if there is a problem through this first season, that that would be something we consider a year from now.
Okay, so then I would just put that in the form of a condition that the noise barriers at the entry driveway will be resolved by the petitioner in working with the Birchwood Community Council, and we'll ask for a report back in one year.
Is that fine with you?
Sounds like what their plan is, yeah.
Okay. All right. Is there any objection to the motion? Hearing none, it passes with all of those conditions. And just, I, I want this to be on the record, and staff, I, this, I'm not taking issue with the decision that was made, but I do want to make it very clear, and I want the message to get back to everyone, should there be any more applications to amend natural resource extractions for activities of a similar nature, whether you think there will be any objection or not, they need to be public here, advertised as public hearings. If nobody cares and nobody shows up, we open the public hearing, we close it, and we vote it up or down. But there are several people out there that if they had, they appeared to be interested in this case, and they have been disenfranchised from voicing their opinions because we didn't advertise it as a public hearing. And I really don't want to be having that happen again. So, having belabored that, we're going to move on. Item E1, I'd like a motion to move that to the end of the agenda.
So moved.
It's been seconded, well, I see Ms. Yoshimura beat you in the queue for that, and you've, so you're the second. Is there any objection? Because we're almost done with that, you folks did a good job on it last week. Case G1 has been postponed until June 7, 2010. That's the case for Alaska Industrial Hardware, the site plan review. Case G2, I will announce this for a public hearing. Now, this one makes no sense to me why it's a public hearing and not on the consent agenda, but it is. This is a petitioner, it's case number S11143-3. The petitioner is First National Bank Alaska, it's a request is for a time extension for a replat. And it's, and with that, I will invite the staff to do a quick presentation.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, I'm filling in for Margaret O'Brien, who normally works this case. This is... This is an application for a second time extension. The need for the time extension is because of previous legal and financial issues that consumed a lot of time. Most of the reviewing agencies have recommended granting the second time extension or had no objection. Watership Management Services added two conditions, which you can see on page two and three of your packet. The department recommends approval of the second time extension subject to those two conditions. However, condition five, Ms. Pease raised an issue that it was, I guess, condition number five wasn't worded very well. So I have handed out to staff tonight a rewording of that condition, and you can see it, it was laid on the table this evening, it's just a simple handout. So we reworded that condition, hopefully to the liking of the commission. That's all, thank you.
Okay. The public hearing is now opening. Petitioner has ten minutes. For you, Testuoni, do you wish to reserve any of your time?
Yes. All right, anyways. Hello, Madam Chair, members of the board, my name is Tony Hoffman, a Wipfantech and we are representing the petitioner North National Bank Alaska. And we agree to the revision of the reworded condition number twenty-five, that's the.
And it was laid on the table for us tonight.
It's a simple reword, but I think Ms. Pease asked for it, it seems to make sense. So we have my plans with that, and I'd like to reserve the rest of my time for any questions or comments.
Okay. Any questions? Yes, Ms.
Do you have any problem with additional condition twenty-four?
No.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any, there's no further questions for you currently? Is there, apparently Ms. Yoshimura has a question.
Good evening, Mr. Hoffman.
Good evening.
So exactly what does this mean, the rewording of condition number twenty-five? You know, one of my goals here is, as a commissioner, is to create a level playing field. And I know that there has been another gravel pit that went through an extensive stabilization and watering that cost tens of thousands, if not a couple of hundred thousand dollars. And yet, for this particular property, they have done none of that work. Am I correct in making that assumption from reading the case?
Because of the original developer did fail in the fall theory of the SWEP that was in place, that's what this condition twenty-four, actually twenty-four and twenty-five are both meant to bring the site into compliance with the original SWEP and the ground vegetation and the rest of the slope stabilization. So that is the intent of this. This condition, where it's worded, will achieve that, and it will make it similar to the grass stabilization and cover that they put in, whether referring to.
And, and correct me, this particular one does not have a timeframe associated with it, is there a timeframe?
Eighteen months, I think.
Eighteen months to complete this work?
It says it's a second eighteen-month extension request.
Right, but I'm wondering when the subdivision will come in compliance with the SWEP?
I think item twenty-four actually, actually has the time conditions you're talking about. Item B, anyways, prepares for development. In 2010, which had not been started, and not nearly thirty percent developed, should be vegetated by August 30th, 2010. Yeah, I think, it does seem like the greatest, or later after Steve Ellis', his intent is to have this site, let's not under construction, have it revegetated and stabilized by later either on June 30th, 2010, or if it's been worked by August 30th, 2010.
And when we say under construction, are we talking about the extension of roads, water, and sewer, or are we talking about vacant lots that are to have, that do not have vertical construction on them?
I'm not sure how to answer that question. I don't know where you're going, but I don't know what his intent is on this. I believe it's for the lots that are going to be served by new land soon. That's the intent of this.
So the vacant lots.
The vacant lots that are already planted, is that what you're talking about?
Right, I'm talking about the vacant lots that are already planted, that don't have vertical construction on them.
Right.
Does the SWEP apply to them, or does it not?
I'm not sure. I know there are instances where it seems like the developers maybe did an unfair treatment because the lots are being, they're clearly repotted and may be having problems that would be impacted by the SWEP. Now, I don't know what the answer is. I mean, this is an issue that's been talked about a lot by Jay Reedy and the planning department, and he's a private development team, probably, about how to incorporate the SWEP, you know, how to incorporate the SWEP and do the planted lots that I give that.
Right, because when you create the SWEP, if the SWEP is created for the purposes of the extension of roads, water, and sewer.
That's correct.
And you extend the roads, water, and sewer, you record a plat, therefore you get lots. But these lots may not be built on and over, it may take a period of time, years in some instances. And so then the question is, on the lots that are developed with roads, water, and sewer extended to them, are they part of the SWEP or are they not part of the SWEP?
I believe that the SWEP is, I believe the developer is still responsible for the SWEP. But I am not positive. That is my understanding of the SWEP process.
Can we have our response from staff?
Yeah, it's a good question.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Yoshimura, I don't have an answer to that question. I looked at the PME's comments, and they had no objection to this time extension. And they would be the ones that would review subdivision agreements and timelines for installation of public utilities. I, they didn't have a problem with this time extension, but I don't know the background on whether or not that would be revegetated by a certain date or, I'm sorry, I don't have the answer.
I can tell you from my experience as a private developer, it's a major issue. And my, and all I want to do is create a level playing field.
Ms. Dean?
Through the chair, Mr. Hoffman, has the SWEP plan already been posted on the job site? Do you know?
Hello, please say.
Are you writing, are you guys writing the SWEP plan, or is it?
Yes, we're moving this out, putting in place for this, so, yes.
You are writing this?
We will be, we'll be following the developer package, which will be acting by June 30th.
Okay, so the NOI and all that, it's already, you know, the EP.
That is part of the condition. I believe the way I read these conditions, it's going to have to be done.
Okay. Now, if I'm not mistaken, the SWEP has to be for the overall development and then for each individual lot also. And it has to be for a certain period of time, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, just wanted to make sure I understood that correctly. Thank you.
And to the, to the chair, Ms. Yoshimura is right, there's a lot of concerns and a lot of confusion about the way the SWEPs are rated and the way they're enforced. And I do think the Ms. Fowles is trying to make a push to clarify who is responsible with the SWEPs after they're planted and left there. But I don't have the answer for this particular case exactly.
Mr. Weddleton?
Well, I thought this was clear cut, but I realized it was just because I didn't know enough of the terms, so thank you. Now, in twenty-four, this lot, if you, it has houses on the west side, but as you go towards the east, there's, it's not developed yet. Now, does twenty-four say that you're going to plant grass there so it's not just a big dust field?
It says that it will stabilize with vegetation, which can be seeded, there's a couple, there's a couple ways to deal with it, and that item has to be dealt with to satisfaction of Steve Ellis' stem oil management. And it doesn't necessarily be seeding, but there is going to be some soil plays, so there is going to be some stabilization to his satisfaction.
So you hydroseed it, or something?
That's one option.
And what would the others be, then? You'd just put different dirt on top?
There's different types of hydroseeding, there's different types of soil, that you can, hydroseeding is an expensive option. It does work well on the sidelines, but it's not necessarily a very viable or economic option for the buyer. And there's thirty-six acres in this remnant that we're talking about stabilizing and vegetating, so there are other seeding options that are not hydroseeding. It's seeded soil is one option, and there's a lot of soil that's out there still that was stopped by by the previous developer. So a seeding option on that soil would probably be less, not necessarily hydroseeding.
Okay, so the goal is primarily to keep dust down, or to make it look better?
That's, that's one of the main goals, especially in these gravel pit areas. There hasn't been a problem for the terraces, we haven't gotten any complaints about it, but it is, it is going to be an issue as time goes on, but that's always an issue with the developer's gravel pits. And the idea is to stabilize soil so you don't get dust and debris. The past developer did leave a mess out there, and we have to analyze how much usable soil is out there, but there's plenty of tops out there. So it's going to be how we use it, spread it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, there are no further questions for you right now, so you have the rest of your time for rebuttal.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to be heard in this matter? If so, please come forward. Anyone at all? Anyone at all? Seeing and hearing no one, you do have rebuttal time. Okay, Mr. Hoffman chooses not to exercise his rebuttal time. I will close the public hearing, and the matter rests with the commission. Ms. Dean?
In the matter of S-11143-3, I move to approve the time extension request with conditions twenty-four and the reworded condition twenty-five added.
Okay, and it's been seconded by Ms. Pease. Would you care to discuss your motion, Ms. Dean?
All the bases are covered, and this will be a housekeeping issue for this subdivision to come into compliance.
Okay. Is there any objection? Hearing none, that time extension is approved. Okay, moving along. The next item on our agenda is case number G3, 2010-048. The petitioner is a municipality of Anchorage. The request is rezoning to R11, Ternigan Arm District. This request involves a petition area that's over five hundred and fifty acres in size out in the Ternigan Arm area. Could we have the staff presentation, please?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The television planning department, I was a lucky guy for this case. The actual acreage was about five hundred and ten acres.
Okay, so diminished.
Yes.
Okay.
Members of the commission, this case is a request to rezone twelve parcels in the portage area from their existing zoning, which is PLI, and one parcel has a T, two, the standard Ternigan Arm zoning district, which is R11. And you can refer to the maps on page twelve and thirteen of the packet for the location of the parcels down in Portage. Most of them are along or near the highway or just out the front end of the Portage Road. This is a planning department-sponsored housekeeping action that coordinates and addresses ownership, land use, and consistency with the newly adopted Ternigan Arm plan, which you saw late the end of the year. As currently zoned, the PLI district either prohibits certain land uses or requires some level of discretionary review for essentially all other uses. This rezone affords more rights to the landowners and makes the zoning consistent with the rest of Ternigan Arm outside of Gerwood, which has its own zoning. Because of the historical problems with records, the area was essentially incorrectly rezoned, starting back with the early zoning in nineteen sixty-nine. And the incorrect rezoning continued through the area-wide in the nineteen eighties when it was made, when the area was made PLI. This action also follows a similar housekeeping rezoning that the commission and the assembly acted on a few years ago for a handful of parcels up in the twenty-mile area just north of here. If I may, the R11 zoning district continues to be a source of confusion for pretty much everyone involved, including landowners and even staff at times. And if I may, the bottom of page three on your packet was my attempt to describe and clarify that confusion. But if I may, I could go through a few of the main points again for you to remember during this hearing. And actually, I could read a little bit from the code. In the current R11 district, it says permitted principal uses and structures include uses and structures that conform to the land use plans of the Ternigan Arm Comp Plan, except uses and structures designated otherwise in conditional use. The new provisional code, which has changed to just TA, says a similar. The permitted uses and densities within the Ternigan Arm district are to conform to the land use plan map policies and residential densities in the adopted Ternigan Arm Comprehensive Plan. The R11 district is somewhat of anomaly for Anchorage, and it basically does the reverse of the other relationship within the municipality, which is the Comp Plan designates general land uses on the land use plan map, and those land uses are implemented through discrete zoning districts on smaller scale. Ternigan Arm provides an R11 zoning district, which is essentially an umbrella or a shell with very basic design standards, lot configuration, et cetera. And the land uses rely on the land use designation in the plan map in the Comp Plan. It's really that simple, but it never is that simple. The recently adopted Ternigan Plan continues that relationship. And for Portage, in response to landowners and historic activities in the Portage area, the commission and the assembly created a new land use designation, which is reflected, I think that's on the map on the very back page of your packet. That is the adopted new land use map for Portage, which includes especially a new category, land use category called rural homestead. And this new land use was specifically done to reflect existing land uses of that nature in Portage. I need to apologize to the commission and to members of the public in general. The final adopted plan is yet to be published, and I've been promised that the final new adopted plan with all its changes will be at least on the internet site next week. And I will report back to you if that's otherwise. From the comments we heard during the review, it's clear that there remains a lot of confusion about this relationship between the Comp Plan land use and the zoning district. We remain convinced that the rezone is the best course of action for the Portage area, and the planning department endorses this rezoning action.
Thank you. Mr. Weddleton?
Just, so a rezone from PLI to R11, will that be more restrictive to the landowners?
Through the chair, Mr. Weddleton, no, actually the opposite. PLI is generally intended for public lands and essentially allows for a handful of permitted uses. It does not allow for, for instance, a residential structure. And other land uses are conditional use or administrative site plan review based on the use.
Well, since I hear silence, I'll jump in. So this letter from Lawrence Albert, it sounds to me like this suffered from some of the confusion that I also had on the R11 and land use plan issue. And are there valid, are there important points in here that, I mean, it's important, but it sounds like it's because of the confusion that most of the issues are brought up?
Through the chair, Mr. Weddleton, I actually have two letters.
Oh.
So I need to date the one you're referencing.
May three?
Okay. The May three letter, as I see it, and I could be wrong, but it focuses on, the essential focus of the letter is on the portion of the lot in question. focus of the letter is on the portion of the lot in question that's zoned W, which is watershed district. This action tonight does not address that.
Mr. Eishem.
Mr. Tobish, just so I understand what's going on, you're dealing with 12 parcels tonight, is that correct?
Through the chair, that's correct.
Okay. And eight of those in the Ternigan plan are designated, the comprehensive plan, are designated as rural homestead. Two of them are single-family residential, and two of them are mixed use. So that accounts for all 12 of them, and these are all owned by private individuals?
Through the chair, that's correct, Mr. Albert.
Okay, okay. And so what we're basically doing by turning it into R. 11, we give them authority to do what's designated in the comprehensive plan part of the thing.
Correct.
That's the way the rules are. It's sort of backwards from everything else.
Through the chair, that's exactly.
Okay.
Yes, it actually allows the comprehensive plan for Ternigan Arm to be implemented.
Yeah, okay. I just want to make sure I'm straight.
All right. Ms. Pease.
Two questions for Mr. Tobish. The parcels that are currently Ternigan mixed use, do they, because of their mixed use classification, have buffers or other criteria that would help them to be compatible with some of the adjoining public uses? Are we, what shall I say, relaxing any of the expected buffers for those? Should they become commercial?
Through the chair, Ms. Pease, no, we're not relaxing. If you recall, some of your actions and the assembly approval in the comp plan added some specific guidelines for development in commercial areas.
And those are for commercial areas, whether it's the railroad or commercial on a R. 11?
That's correct.
Okay. And my other question, I think I understand your explanation on page five, that the rezoning action doesn't change the railroad's access concern nor resolve it. But I just wanted to make sure, are land use permits required for the types of residential, I mean, for just residential development down here in this area?
Through the chair, Ms. Pease, land use permits and other relevant permits in the area are required for any development.
Okay, thank you. All right, Mr. Eishem.
And the mixed use lots, are they parcels 1 and 12 that are right along the highway there?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Seeing no further questions in the queue, I will open the public hearing and invite the first person to come forward. I'll announce the rules as you're coming down. If you are speaking on behalf of a group or community council, you have five minutes in which to offer your testimony. If you're speaking on behalf of an individual or yourself, you have three minutes. So welcome and come forward and share your thoughts with us. Yes, sir. And if you'll please state your name for the record. I know you probably have a long drive, many of you do.
My name is Larry Albert, councilor for property owner by the name of co-owners Joseph and Paul Malone. Sent me a letter electronically today. I was told that that might be available to the group of you, and I understand a few comments I guess you'd like.
Yes, we have. You can pick up that microphone if it's more comfortable for you, Mr. Albert.
Yes, and I tell that I should send the original. I have the original here. I can post this in the mail, or I can tender it to the commission, whichever is.
You can hand it to me, and we'll make sure it gets to staff.
Okay. I'll just summarize on behalf of the owners. This is lot 33. It's one of the large homesteads on the south side of the Portage Valley. The concern is regarding the classification of rural homestead. The final plan's not available. Mr. Tobish has indicated that he's quoted from the text of the plan that describes what's allowed in this district. It seems vague to me. There's no indication of density allowed. It also seems to be static. Now, that's just my personal interpretation, having read this. Static in the sense that that might accurately describe what would be allowed to be on the original homestead entry under the public land laws 35 years ago, but we're now 35 years later, and my understanding regarding comprehensive land use plan generally is that we don't want to be engaging in static projections of what would be the highest and best use or the proper use consistent with community values. Having said that, the owners don't necessarily object to this classification, but they're concerned about the possibility of future uses of the land, specifically gravel extraction, which is mentioned in the letter, and also the possibility of timber harvesting. A separate portion of the property does continue forested green. The plan, at least that portion of the final plan that's been quoted in the staff comments, does not address these types of activities. So all I can do is defer that they might be allowed, may be allowed or maybe disallowed under the conditional use permit procedure. And so I'm stating the concern on behalf of the owner in the future that they'd like to have their rights reserved. I respectfully disagree with Mr. Tobish that the comment that the letter is concerned only with the watershed district, the letter is concerned with more than the watershed district, as I've just summarized. Also, I believe that the rural, again, just reading the text that's quoted in the staff comments, this classification of rural homestead, it's not clear, and it's vague as to whether that entails a possibility of commercial use. It suggests residential use or homestead use, which again would have been historical 35 years ago, but does not necessarily reflect current conditions or projected future conditions that the owners would be interested in. I've specifically mentioned that the homestead to the east of my client, that would be lot 32 of U.S. survey 701-2, I think almost all of these parcels are legally described.
If you found that false, please.
The parcel to the east of my client's parcel are engaged in commercial use of them. Thank you very much.
Thank you. There may be some questions for you. Mr. Weddleton.
Some of the comments, it seems to me, what you're addressing, the relatively new comprehensive plan for Ternigan Arm, and that's, I don't think is really something that we would be changing here. So really, this rezoning, I mean, that's like, that's something that happened a year ago. So what we're doing here is this rezoning to implement that plan. So I wonder, like, you're late.
No, are you writing a comment? I understand the comment, if it's a comment, if it invites an answer. The final plan's not before us, number one, number two, that the general principle here is that zoning is to be consistent with a land use plan. It's not clear to me that this zoning is consistent with a land use plan, because the land use plan classification is vague, number one, number two, the permitted uses for this rural homestead classification appears to be only residential use, and there's no indication of what density is allowed. So I think the comment is still timely. And if nothing else, my client is preserving his rights in the event a future application for conditional use permit or site plan or whatever kind of regulatory process is going to ensue, that these comments are preserved, that the statements made this evening are preserved with regard to future adjudication.
So a big part is, you're having a hard time commenting because you didn't even know what rural homestead means yet, is that right? Because the plan's not published.
There's a little bit of a vibration. Could you repeat that, please?
So part of the problem is you don't know what rural homestead means, because the plan is not available yet.
Yes, I don't know what rural homestead means in terms of the plan, number one, number two. I don't know what is allowed when you apply this R. 11 against the classification, because the classification is vague and the terms of R. 11 don't clearly match with the classification.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Are there further questions for Mr. Albert? Apparently not. Thank you for coming out tonight. And if you wish to have the original letter entered into the record, we can take that for you, sir. If you give it to the secretary. Thank you. Okay. Will the next person that would like to testify come forward, please?
Hi, my name's Julie Evansen. I'm parcel number five out in Portage. I also have concerns and questions about what.
Can you get a little closer to the mic? You can pick it up.
All right. I also have questions about what our revenue is and what the Rural Homestead Act is. We're 90 acres. There's 15 cabins that I rented out there. It's agricultural land. There's six horses that are fielded, and it's just a question of what are we redesigning the land into? And every time I ask them, they're like, oh, it's going to stay the same. But then I talked to other people up 20 miles that actually got their land changed, and they can't do what they want to do. So it's just hard for us to try to pass something if we don't know what we're going to become.
Okay.
Also, there is a posting, they sent that, it was posted April 9th. It was posted for one and a half days. So there was 33 people out there that I tried to contact to let them know that there was a meeting tonight, and they don't even know about it. There was a Portage Valley Community Council meeting, April 26th, which was Monday, and nobody at the meeting knew except for me. I had seen the sign on feed to try to get more information on, but our community council president didn't even know about the meeting tonight. I think that should be a concern, however, here.
Okay. Thank you. Just a minute, we may have a question for you. Mr. Weddleton.
Yeah, thanks for those points, that they are very important. What were some things that your neighbors wanted to do that were restricted?
We don't understand what we're going to become, so we don't know what we're going to be restricted in doing.
Right, I think you had mentioned that there were some landowners not too far away who tried to do some things but weren't allowed to. Did I get that right?
Yeah, at 20 Mile, they wanted to have their land, they thought was zoned, five acre lots, when it was re-zoned two and a half acre lots. And they just found out about that at the last Portage Valley Community Council meeting. That would be the backwards.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you for coming out tonight and to drive all the way into town to testify on this matter. Is there someone else that would like to testify? Yes, sir.
Hello, my name is John Bridges, and I am the owner of parcel number four on the map with co-owner Kristy Dobbs. I guess my question is, I've talked with FEED extensively. We're kind of beginning to realize that maybe this isn't such a bad thing yet. We're just, we need to see the plan. It's hard to be in favor and agree with something if you haven't seen the final draft. And my understanding was that this was going to be voted on tonight. I don't see that this zoning was going to be approved or disapproved tonight, but how can it be approved if we don't have the final draft? We would like to know what it is. And I believe FEED said earlier that that would be available next week online. Was that, was that, and so my question, I guess, is this going to be postponed to a further date till we can review that, the final draft?
The commission will make a decision tonight, and we're going to hear testimony from everyone that's here that wants to testify, and then we're going to talk about it. Okay?
So maybe you will make a decision for the zoning tonight, or maybe you won't?
We could make a decision. We could also decide to postpone it.
Okay, my point is, I would like, I would like to see it postponed due to, we don't even know what it is. How can you vote when we don't have the final draft for sure as it is, what it is? I mean, hence all the confusion. Everybody's confused. We need to, we need to look at this further. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Ms. Pease, I noticed that you had been in the queue. Have you, who, did you have a question for someone?
Yeah, not for this gentleman, thank you. I just wanted to ask Mr. Tobish to respond to the last person's concern that the community council didn't know about it, and I just wanted him to verify his notice procedures followed with the requirements.
Through the chair, Madam Pease, the sites were posted in April in the appropriate timeframe. It's very possible the signs blew down, you know, Portage, that's very possible. There's not, in some of the areas, in order to, for me to try to be true to the location of the sign, I think one of the signs was on a willow, which was the only thing available. So that, very possible, a sign blew down. I was looking at my notes. I attended a Portage council meeting that was held here in Anchorage at the Federation of Community Councils at the time when this was noticed, and addressed a lot of issues. I addressed the council. I explained what the rezoning meant, what was the hearing was all about, et cetera. So, and the president of the council chaired that meeting, so I don't, I can't explain why they don't know about tonight.
Okay, thank you.
If I may, if I just finish, we also did mail out letters explaining the action to all of the landowners in question, and the council should have also gotten that.
And just to have the record straight, were those mailed a week ago, two weeks ago, or what lead time was there?
Through the chair, I'd have to check for the exact date, but it was in advance of April 9th. It was easily five weeks.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Weddleton.
Just a little follow-up on the community council contact. We had a comment in a packet several months ago that kind of indicated that the Portage Community Council is fairly new. Is that correct? Newly active, maybe?
Through the chair, as I understand it, the activity level has changed. It's an original council, but they have since, in the past year roughly, become more active.
So there could be some confusion, and they're kind of learning how to do it right now.
I can't.
Okay, thank you.
And just if I may, Madam Chair, we've personally talked to the, I've personally talked to the community council president on several occasions on a wide range of topics. And I think, you know, what Pease tried to do is indicate some of the confusion that exists. We've had a Ternigan Arm plan, we have a rezoning, and we of course have Title 21, the Title 21 rewrite. So we do our best to kind of lay all of those out and explain the differences, but again, we understand that there could be some confusion.
Okay, thank you. Yes, ma'am, please come forward.
My name is Kristy Dobbs. I'm also owner of parcel number four. And I'd just like to review what the other folks have said. We have not seen the plan, so we can't say, since the plan hasn't been published, that this is going to be, you know, what's going to work for our use. We did receive one thing about the meeting, but we didn't receive both that we know about. I see that there's one on page, I think, 18 where it's available for comment. So maybe, you know, there's not a, everybody's not receiving the notices, and it is windy in Portage, so, you know, it might have been posted and gone down. But I'd just like to make a formal statement that it is confusing, and with not having a plan published or available to review, it's hard to sign off on whether it's, you know, we think it, whether that means that zoning is going to meet the land use plan.
Okay, thank you. We have some questions, I think, for you. Mr. Weddleton.
Actually, just, I guess feeding that back to staff, is there an urgency on doing this, or can it wait until after the plan is published, at least online?
Through the chair, Mr. Weddleton, as I understand it, there is no urgency, except for one of the landowners is seriously attempting to get a bank loan for future development.
Get a bank loan for future development?
Is that person here?
No, the person's not here.
Well, I don't know that, if that's too much private information to release about.
In other words, if I may, there's no absolute urgency, it's just that's what was prompting us to act now rather than, you know, later in the summer. us to act now, rather than, you know, later in the summer.
Okay, yes, sir. Mr. Eishem, did you have a question, a staff?
Yes, they keep referring to something that hasn't been published, is this the comprehensive plan that we approved over a year ago?
Through the chair, that's correct.
Oh, okay.
Madam Chair, if I may clarify, the assembly took a lot longer to get to the plan, and they just approved it late at the end of the year.
Yes, sir.
Once again, my name is John Bridges, I wanted to comment on the Portage Community Council down there-
Can we invite him back up?
We better invite him back up.
Okay, I'd like to invite Mr. Bridges to return to speak to us.
Oh, I'm sorry, thank you. Part of the new activity is, this council's been running on for a while down there, and it seemed to be primarily run and organized by one special interest down there, being the Conservation Center. The president of the Portage Valley Community Council, according to their own bylaws, isn't legally even allowed, he is not a property owner, nor is he a resident, he lives a Palmer. Yet, his point and authority as the president down there is that he represents the Conservation Center. So, there's kinda been a shakeup, and the reports, and the words, and the voice that you've been getting in the past from this council, aren't necessarily in agreement with the majority of the property owners. For one thing, this entity down there doesn't pay taxes, and they don't actually own any land, they're a nonprofit business. They're not a homestead, they're not, they're a highway nonprofit business that seems to have the biggest voice and the biggest direction in what goes on down there. So I just wanted to make that point, that we're kinda having a shakeup, there's probably gonna be a changing of the guard, and who has been dealing with the assembly and with the Planning Commission as far as the voice of the Community Council of Portage.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Robinson, and then Mr. Eishem, and Ms. Yoshimura.
Thank you, Madam Chair, just because I think I confuse things, it's not, I guess, the chapter president that I've been speaking to, but it's Joanne Blackburn, who I believe is one of the landowners. So evidently, she's an officer, but not the president, so just to clarify.
Okay. Is there anyone else that would like to testify? If so, please come forward. Wanna make sure we don't exclude anyone.
Hi, my name is George Shelley. I own the parcel eleven, I was the original homestead, I homesteaded it in nineteen seventy-three, I occupy it since then. I've been to court probably four times for the Bureau of Land Management, he's went lights from the Railroad Department, and several other incidences over the years. I'm right next connection to the railroad, which is normally I-2 zoning. If my property could be zoned I-2 to comply with the railroad, which is next door to me, I would be satisfied. But I don't know exactly what R-11 will comply as far as that kind of zoning.
Okay. Well, I'm looking here at the map and trying to see what your parcel would be, but it's, the map is not at a scale where I can tell. Mr. Tobish, could you respond to Mr. Shelley?
Through the chair, there is no I-2 in the Turnigan Arm area.
There's petitions that they're representing this thing.
But there is part of it that is industrial.
There's an industrial land use designation in the comp plan, and the railroad area is, has a land use designation of transportation facility. If a landowner wishes to have an industrial-type use along the railroad, that would be entertained through a conditional use approval, unless it was given a designation of, specifically of industrial.
Thank you. Okay. Do you have any further comments?
No, just to, you know, just to define what R-11 is gonna be, I would like the I-2 zoning.
Okay, it's, actually, the specific use for each parcel is defined in the plan that unfortunately is not available yet. And so, once that's available online, you would be able to go in and look at it and see what classification your particular parcel is, according to the map.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Is there anyone else? Anyone at all? Okay. What is, Ms. Yoshimura?
So, if I understand this correctly, we're being asked to rezone twelve parcels because one owner wants to get a bank loan? No? So, okay, so correct me, so that I can, so that I can understand this.
The rezoning is, as we described upfront, to be consistent with the comprehensive plan. Basically, everything in Turnigan Arm, in staff's opinion, is essentially gonna be an R-11 or a PLI if it's a public, it's a publicly-held land. So private land, in our view, the appropriate zoning is R-11, so that the landowner can go forward with a development that has already been designated by the land use plan map. The issue of the gentleman wishing to go forward is an issue in timing. Once we basically approved the comp plan, the update to the comp plan, this was one of the implementation actions. And so, we have a period of time to which we're gonna follow up, as staff time allows, and make these implementation actions. And because there was a desire for somebody to go forward, as they're basically allowed to do under the comp plan, and this is the only thing sort of holding them back, we wanted to move forward with the implementation action at this point in time. But the reason is not because of this individual, the reason is because, you know, basically the comp plan has designated what the uses should be here, and we're trying to actually create some flexibility here, despite, I think, what the testimony is, that increase actually the flexibility for all of these landowners in Portage.
But the comp plan has not been published yet.
The final version, after assembly approval, has not been completed and not been posted on the website, that's correct.
Well, I'm afraid I have to agree with some of the testimony from the audience. I do remember as one of the first meetings that I attended as a Planning and Zoning Commission member, driving down to Portage, and I was and remain very impressed by the level of activity at that Community Council. I mean, the room was packed, there were over thirty individuals in the room, all of them appeared to care very deeply about their community. And I do think we have to take some of these comments into consideration.
Okay, well, I have not closed the hearing yet. What is the desire of the commission?
Do we make, I punch my motion thing if it's appropriate now?
Oh, sure.
But the motion would be, in the case of this rezoning, is to leave the public hearing open and reschedule a continuation to an appropriate time after the plan has been published, at least online, for people to review. And I would also allow people who have spoken this evening perhaps to come up again, essentially be better educated.
Well, they'll have an opportunity to look at the plan, it'll be more meaningful to them. I would concur with that, but I will not talk until we get a motion on the floor. And Ms. Pease, that's your motion, and Ms. Pease has seconded it. And we have Mr. Eishem in the queue. You're taking yourself out?
No, I'm on talk.
You wanna talk, okay.
You know, having been a Community Council President out Eagle River Valley, I can understand how things get a little bit wrapped around the axle sometimes, and this is, this is an interesting situation, where we have the R-11 zoning, basically taking the uses directly out of the comprehensive plan, rather than the other way around. And so, I think it would be worthwhile for staff, if in fact we decide to postpone this thing, to explain that in gross detail, so that people understand the relationship and which way the information is flowing. Additionally, I just picked up some things tonight where people were worried about natural resources extraction, large domestic animals, and industrial use. And if you look under the conditional uses listed under R-11, every one of those is allowed as a conditional use. So, if a guy wants to have industrial land, he can ask for it, and he can get a conditional use for it. If a guy wants to have large domestic animals, he can get permission for that, and same with the natural resource extraction. And I didn't see anything about timber harvesting, I was looking for it, but I couldn't find that. So, I think that if you explain how this thing works, then people will feel a bit more comfortable with what's going on, because it is a little strange, the way it's set up.
Yeah, and I think that it will, I think that needs to happen before the fact, rather than after the fact. Ms. Dean?
Through the chair, I would like to make a comment to Mr. Eishem's use of conditional uses. Whenever you do conditional use, it has to go before the Community Council, and then it has to come before, you know, it's a fairly long involved process for somebody who's already been doing it. Not only that, they might be denied it through the process. So it's a little bit tough when you've already been doing something for a while, you already have an established business, and now you have to go get a conditional use and potentially be turned down for it. So I can understand why somebody sitting in the audience that lives in Portage Valley may not want to go to an R-11 zoning and have to take the chance of going through a conditional use and losing their ability to continue doing what they've been doing.
Mr. Robinson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just one very important point of clarification, and I appreciate Mr. Eishem's comments, because I think he's explaining the issue probably better than we have this evening. Currently, the majority of these parcels that are subject to rezone are zoned PLI. And if you look at the uses that you can do under PLI, I believe that you will find that they are much more restrictive than what you can do under R-11. And so, Ms. Dean, actually, it's not a matter of whether they can actually, you know, pursue a conditional use right now, they could pursue a conditional use under PLI, but even those are fewer than the list of conditional uses under the R-11 zoning. The point of the conditional uses within the R-11 is that even if you want to pursue a use that's different from the one in your comp plan, so what would normally be in Anchorage is, if you want to pursue something that's different from your zoning district, you can still do it, you just go through a conditional use process. And I think, again, we appreciate the complexity, we'll take a step back, we'll get the plan posted on the site, and we also encourage everybody here, as well as others, to contact us so that we can have, you know, sort of lay this out, as well as after we get down here tonight, take advantage of the opportunity to have a fuller conversation. Thank you.
Mr. Weddleton?
Well, maybe following up on that a little bit, is there's really nothing in this rezoning here, we're not really here to change that Turnigan Arm plan, that's been adopted, so those land use designations already exist. And if we wanted to change the list of what could be allowed on any of these categories, it would be amending that comprehensive plan, which is quite a bit different than what we're doing here. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. The motion before us is to postpone. And to not, no specific date. Is that, that's my understanding. Do you have a date certain that you would recommend, Mr. Tobish?
I don't have a specific date, but if the plan is indeed published next week, I would recommend late May, early June.
It would have to be June.
If you could just refer it to the first meeting in June, I think that would probably work fine, unless you all feel we need to give it till July. But I'd rather postpone to a date certain at this point, would be my preference.
What's the notification requirement?
I think if we postpone to a date certain, there's no further notification required.
Well, I'd modify the motion then to accept the first meeting of June, assuming that the plan is published within a week to ten days from now.
Okay. Do you concur, Ms. Pease?
Well, I guess I just have the one concern about whether we wanted to enable a Community Council discussion of it. I mean, the Community Council participated in the drafting of the plan, we're not changing the plan, so maybe that's not necessary.
Yeah.
I concur.
Okay, first meeting in June. Is there any objection? Hearing, no objection? The, this matter will be postponed until the first, our first meeting in June, yes, continued to the first meeting in June, which will be June seventh. And the public hearing is still open, and because you haven't had an opportunity to look at the plan, that this rezoning is implementing, you will all have an opportunity to testify again. This is very rare, this just about never happens, but because you've been somewhat disenfranchised by not having the plan to refer to, we will make the exception. So, that case has been dispensed with. Do you wanna just keep going? So, let's just keep going. Do you need to? Okay, we're not gonna move very far away. Those of you that do need to run, asunder for a minute or two. Run. We're ready, back on the record. Well. Here we go. Now, we are at our final item of business for the evening, and this is about the third or fourth round for this. It is case number two thousand and ten dash zero three seven. It's the part of the Title Twenty-One rewrite, it's the proposal for site condo design requirements. And I will announce where we are this evening. Even though I was absent from the last meeting on April twelfth, where my fellow commissioners did such illustrious work on this, I did listen to the entire proceedings on Granicus. And I'm really disappointed Mr. Frederick isn't here this evening, because I was amused by his discussion about perhaps having head bolt plug-ins that were like hitching posts. I thought that would have been a clever design. But as I recall from listening, and Mr. Eishem did such a good job of leading the pack, that you conducted all of your work in the committee of the whole, and then adopted all of the changes, you came out of the committee of the whole, adopted all of the changes you had made in the committee of the whole, and you held over three items. You held over B three, and C five, what had been C five on today's memo, it is now C four, and then E three. And so, tonight- And so tonight, we just have three little items to deal with, and I'm sure we can do it quick. The first one would be, well, let me ask this, I don't know how much we're going to have to talk about these things, a bit. So we probably need to go in the committee of the whole again.
So would.
And then second, Connie, is there any objection? Hearing none. We're in the committee of the whole. Let's start talking about it.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I have some questions regarding B3. I understand what administrative site plan review is.
Is your microphone on?
Yes, it is.
Oh, good.
And I have the following suggestions and comments. That development shall be approved in accordance with Table 21.07-X. Development shall meet the maximum number of dwelling units for the review process. And I would advocate that that would be the maximum number of dwelling units to be approved by an administrative site plan review to be 15. I concur with that number. But as we all know, the number of structures can vary on a lot considerably, and I don't think we need the maximum number of structures and the maximum number of dwelling units. I think it's more appropriate to have the dwelling units as opposed to the structures. And then I would recommend that the Planning and Zoning Commission review the site plans for all units in excess of 15. I'm not in favor of the conditional use, particularly as I've heard described this evening, some of the benefits and detriments of a conditional use. I don't think it's appropriate for site condominiums. My intent in advocating for this proposal initially, for it to be added into the Title 21, is I believe that the public is entitled to have some input in terms of what is going to be next door to them as it relates to density and site condos. You know, we are not allowed as developers to develop large parcels of property into single-family lots, I believe, greater than six, without having a public hearing process. But yet, under, without this type of regulation, you can, and there has been, develop 200 condominiums on a single tract without any community or neighborhood input whatsoever. So I think this is an important piece of the Title 21 rewrite. I do not agree that site condos should have a continual, a conditional use, but I do think they need to have a public site plan review process.
Okay. Other thoughts?
And that's when it's above 15?
Yes, when it's above 15.
And you're saying, don't worry about the number of structures?
No.
Just talk about dwelling.
Number of units. Because that's how parking is impacted, that's the traffic impact, and we don't, I personally don't care about the number of structures. It can be a 15-unit building, or it could be 15 single-family houses. It's a question of the households and the structure, and the number of units that are the most important.
Okay. Mr. Reddleton?
Well, that sounds simpler, but I think in some cases, you could have, we're talking about multiple structures on one lot, because you, an apartment building in any zoning that had more than 15 units would have to go through this process then. So really, the fundamentals of this particular section is when you're developing more than one structure on a lot, without replating a lot.
Well, not an apartment building.
No.
Because it's not a site condo.
But condos don't exist. What exists are multiple structures on one lot. So multiple residential structures. I think that's the key.
May I clarify that this section would only kick in when you have at least two structures? So a single structure with 15 units would not trigger this section.
Okay.
Okay. And I'm okay with that. That would be in a apartment-style building.
So you need some wording that would say that.
I believe it's in the applicability, B1, this section applies to the development of multiple principal residential structures on a single lot.
So in order for this to kick in, it would need to be at least two structures. Correct? All right. Okay.
Correct.
Ms. Pease?
Yes, if I heard Ms. Yoshimura correctly, her intent is that it be a major site plan review.
Correct.
But that it'd be heard by the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Right.
And so we'd have to spell that out because it just looked at 03180. And it's, that section assigns the major site plan review to the Urban Design Commission. So that would need to be added into the language. Okay, thank you. Just to clarify.
Okay. Oh, Mr. Eishem, go ahead.
And this only applies on those lots that are designated in B2, right? So it's an R2M, R3, R4, R4A, blah, blah, blah. So it only applies to those. Okay, are we going to have to add, based on Erica's comments, do we then have to have minimum number of structures on that first line for the administrative site plan review? Do we need to have a column that says minimum two?
I think B1 addresses that, if I'm not correct.
Or do we need to put that in? I don't know.
Multiple principal structures on a single lot. So it would.
That means two, at least two.
At least two. So I don't think we need to do that.
But there's a difference between structures and dwelling units.
Multiple principal residential structures.
I think that takes care of.
So if you have a single principal residential structure, that'd be a single-family home, right?
Correct.
No, no, it could be an apartment building.
No, it wouldn't be classified as that.
A single principal residential structure could have any number of units in it.
And that doesn't apply, this doesn't apply to that. It's got to be multiple.
Correct.
Principal residential structure. So that means there's going to be at least two structures.
Could be two single-family homes, or it could be, well, this wouldn't apply to that because, I'm sorry, it would. You'd have an administrative site plan review for two single-family homes, or you could have two eight-plexes, which would tip you over your 15-unit threshold and go into this review process that you're discussing.
Correct.
Or you could have a duplex and a single-family home, or something like that.
You could, and that would be an administrative site plan review. It wouldn't be, if the duplex was two dwelling units as a condominium, as opposed to.
Okay, so we don't have to say minimum number of structures? That's taken care of in one?
I believe that is correct. That's how, at least I interpret it. But we can say a minimum of two structures.
Well, now, if there were a single-family home and a duplex, that would not be administrative site plan review. It's only when you would hit 15 dwelling units total.
No, no.
No.
That's maximum.
Maximum. For an administrative site plan review.
Was that going to drive you crazy, having to do these site plan reviews when there's two home, two structures?
I don't think so.
No?
I was just going to offer to clarify, B1 to, instead of just saying multiple structures, we could start with two, or we could change it to be two or more.
Principal residential structures. Okay.
I'd apply that.
Okay.
I had a question for Connie's thing. You're going to have public input.
That's correct.
Would the UDC be okay? Or does it have to be?
I think that the planning commission. I'm not Connie, but I can't help myself.
You know, there are issues of parking, and traffic, and neighborhood connectivity, secondary egresses. I do believe this belongs at the planning and zoning level and not UDC, which is more concerned with design structures.
Okay.
Don't want a bunch of architects.
Anything else? I just want to add that I think what Connie has come up with is not only adequate, but that it's really good. One of the things that we're trying to accomplish here is to have oversight for site condos that are developed. And in the process, we need to keep in mind, as a community, we have an obligation to provide affordable housing. And what is affordable housing? And I can tell you what, if we were to require conditional uses for site condos, the cost of a conditional use and implementation of a conditional use does not make for affordable housing. So I think it's great to not make that be a requirement. That is totally overkill. You know, a major site plan review is more than enough for anything over 15 units, dwelling units. So I'm glad to see that you suggested that to be gone.
Madam Chair, is, are we going to limit the major site plan review to 30? Or should it just be?
Just 15 up?
Yes.
15 and above?
Yeah. Anything, that's why I understood what Connie.
Sixteen.
Yeah, sixteen and above. Anything in excess of 15.
Right.
Ms. Pease?
Yes, I'm wondering whether the major site plan review would still go to the UDC for comment. And I ask that because until the commission has a few of these and gets up to speed, the commission might miss some of the design-type questions, such as whether, you know, a 50-foot-wide courtyard is going to get the sun or whatever.
We already do site plan reviews, major site plan reviews for commercial facilities. Well, these are structures, I mean, our brains still think along those same lines, these are just a different use. So I don't think that we need to have any time to come up on us to speed. We already think about those things like sunlight, and traffic flow, and stuff.
And we've got a very smart staff that can help us with that kind of stuff?
Yes, we do, and we all are very smart, too. All right. Have we, are we, have we beat number B3 to death? I think so. So now we move on to C4.
And I think it is impossible, as I read this to, with the shall, to make all these things mandatory, since a lot of what we're doing now in the community is infill and odd-shaped lots. So I would recommend that developer should make every effort to arrange, to shall design and arrange in such a manner as to, et cetera, et cetera. And then I think it is up to either staff or the Planning and Zoning Commission to determine whether or not the developer has made every effort to take these items into consideration.
Here specifically shall becomes should, is that what you're saying?
Yes. And then because it is having either an administrative review or a public review, we can determine, we or staff can determine whether or not the developer is following that intent.
Is there any way we could give them some sort of incentive to do that kind of stuff? I don't know.
I think it's really hard at this particular point in time to determine that, there aren't, it's not a lot of acreage left in Anchorage for development. I mean, I think sometimes you're looking at a four-plex lot that you could turn into four condos, and it's usually an infill situation, and so you don't necessarily have a lot of options as far as light is concerned, because there may be a four-story or a three-story building.
Right.
Walking southern.
Right.
For you. So.
But we have to ask those kinds of questions, though.
Yes, yes.
And downtown is where you're going to see a lot of this.
Yes.
Because right now, there are a lot of very large structures going in. And so you'll be seeing a lot of that downtown.
Yep.
Is there a way we could build, build something in where the guy has to answer the question, that I can't do this because, or something like that?
What would you suggest?
Oh, I don't know.
I don't know.
Sort of like a checklist, you know?
Yeah, a checklist.
Eyes on the street, solar access, extent fees, privacy, and for neighbors' yards, and the guy.
Well, you know, that's subjective. What I think is privacy, you may not.
Yeah, well, I just.
Yeah, that's a good idea. Stacy?
If I had my trellis on C4, I'd eliminate it entirely.
You know, so would I.
Okay. Well, if we were able to vote on that separately from everything else, I would, it's just not, you know, we're talking about should and shall, and, you know, all these possibilities, and it's, it's too fuzzy. We need to have, you know, this is it or not.
I see it as micro-management, myself. Mr. Reddleton?
You know, it might be micro-management, but I think it's consistent with other sections of the Title 21. It looks almost verbatim out of some things we've done for other residential design sections. Is that correct?
Similar. We're trying to get at the concepts that we've also tried to get to in the residential design standards.
I think the difficulty in that is we really are dealing with higher density, and I think when you're doing a subdivision, you're planning single-family lots, whether they're 40, 50, 60, or 70 feet wide, I think you have a lot more opportunity to do this than when you're dealing in smaller parcels, then you have a certain limitation. I mean, I recently looked at a four-plex lot that was 70 feet wide by 120 feet. There are condos in the neighborhood, there are rental units in the neighborhood, there are single-family houses. But because it is already built out on three sides, it would be impossible, for example, to do eyes on the street, because you've got 10-foot, you've got side yard setback requirements, and if it takes a four-plex, you couldn't possibly get four units with eyes on the street. It has to go lengthwise. The building has to go lengthwise. So I guess it's that sort of dilemma. So I think it can be a goal, but I don't think it can be a shall.
But I agree with that, but I'd like to leave it in and just make it a should, just to say these things are important. It's pretty much out of our comp plan, it's consistent with other sections of the code.
I can go either way. I can accept a should.
I can accept a should, but a shall is just too.
I think we should, I think we should keep it in, especially, it just, we see buildings put up, have been put up over the past decades, where there are no windows on the south side. That kind of thing doesn't take rocket scientists to figure out. So I think it's a good reminder.
Okay, then how do we want it to read, from beginning to end?
I would suggest developers should make every effort to design and arrange dwelling units in such a manner as to provide those items.
Did you get that? Okay. All right. Is there any objection to that language? Doesn't sound like it. So we can move on to the last one, E3. Building spacing.
Right. I have no objection to paragraph number, to the first sentence in E3. All portions of any taller building shall be separated from any other building by a minimum distance equal to one-half the height of the taller building. I'm ambiguous about those, about that sentence. I think at this particular point in time, I'd like to see the last sentence deleted. I realize that we have addressed this issue in other multifamily situations. But again, I would hate to see affordable housing development, which this is most likely going to apply to in stacked condos or apartment-style units, not be built for the simple reason that there might not be quite as much distance as would normally be anticipated or expected.
I concur. You know, ladies and gentlemen, there's hardly any place that people. low-income people can afford to buy a home, low to moderate-income people.
And units are going to get, affordable and workforce housing, regrettably, is, is going to become more stacked.
Because it needs to.
Yeah.
Yeah.
How tall is a three-story building? Is that going to be 36 feet of...
Yeah, about 35, 36.
About 35, 36.
Stacy?
It's interesting that we're requesting that they be farther apart if they're two three-story condos than if they're two three-story houses that are in separate lots. They only have to have five-foot setbacks, which would make it a total of 10 feet between two three-story houses. Why are we requiring condos to be farther apart? I don't understand. And...
Good question.
I, I think it should be just 10 feet all across the board, just like it is in our one, our two, and all the others.
So you would support the deletion of the last sentence?
I would.
Ms. McConnell, I'll defer to you, and then I'll ask...
Thank you, Madam Chair. I feel that deletion of the last sentence does leave a hole for buildings that could be 45 feet tall, 60 feet tall. And having two 60-foot-tall residential structures within 10 feet of each other does not seem to me to create a conducive living environment. I would recommend, or perhaps suggest adding a limitation, so equal to one-half the height of the taller building up to a maximum of a certain distance, if that would make the commission more comfortable, perhaps 25 feet.
25 feet is only two stories.
Yes, and so half the height, that would be half the height of a four-story building, approximately.
Mm-hmm.
And with the building shorter, it would be less than that, because that would be the, it would be the lesser of those two numbers.
Right now, you are always going to have 10 feet between any building, whether it's a single-family unit or a two or three, or a, a single-family unit, dwelling unit, or a two- or three-story building. So what we're really talking about are buildings that are greater than three stories. And what in, I guess, let me ask you this question, Erica, if I may. In an, in an R2M or R3 zone, what now is the current requirement of space between those types of, you know, say you take an R3 or an R2M zone, and you want to put up two four-story buildings, what would be the requirement for separation between those structures at this time on a single lot?
My understanding is that it depends on the construction type for the fire rating, so that your normal spacing would be 10 feet. But I think under certain conditions, you can take that down to seven feet.
So we are, in essence, by making anything greater than 10 feet, lowering our density abilities, capacity?
I, I don't know what happens when the buildings get larger. I think that's a building code issue and a fire code issue, and I'm just not familiar with those. So I can't say yes or no for sure. My seven-foot example comes from duplexes. So I don't know what would happen if you had to, you know, say, take an admiral's curve, or you have, you know, apartment buildings of 20 units or 50 units, or whatever they are. I don't know how close together those are allowed to get. So they may or may not be affecting the density.
I don't want to do anything, make any recommendations within this site condo ordinance that is going to reduce density, because the whole idea of condominium development and site condominium development...
To have high density.
Is, is, is for higher density. And what we're trying to do here is put some, or provide some community and neighborhood input regarding density. So I guess I would like to eliminate that sentence and work within the zoning limitations as they are today and as they will be through the rewrite of Title 21.
I could live with that.
Mr. Whedleton?
Well, this is the rewrite of Title 21.
Well, that's true. I misspoke. So, within the zoning densities, within the zoning densities is, I guess...
Oh, okay. Well, you know, I understand your point, but you don't necessarily have to decrease density, number of units per lot. You just can add a floor, then you could have, I mean, you go taller. But they would, thinking about this, if we had two 60-foot-tall buildings 10 feet apart, that's really close. That's hard to imagine.
I can't think of an example like that.
I can't either. But if people are choosing to live there because it's affordable, the mobile home parks are going away, there aren't many people, there are a lot of people that cannot afford a $300, $300,000 house or a $250,000 house. But they still want someplace to call home.
Without driving to the valley?
Yes, without driving to the valley, because they, you know, they can't afford the gas to drive back and forth to the valley and get to their job. We have to think about realities sometimes, and not what would be nice.
The cost for construction, when you go to a three-story, from a three-story to a four-story, is enormous because of the earthquake requirements.
Right, and the different fire codes, probably?
Yes. And then you get, yeah, it's, it's just, it's, it's like you're building, it's another animal. Chandler's Cove by Colati Brothers on Brayton, that's an example of four-story buildings. They're fairly far apart. You wouldn't believe the structure that's inside of that for shear and for earthquake and everything else. It's, it's quite an amazing steel and concrete structure inside that. But that's a good example of a four-story building that's got plenty of separation. They're not right on top of each other. I think they're probably a good 40 feet apart, I guess. I don't know if anybody's familiar with it, but it's, you know, pretty reasonable.
You know, I am, I am familiar, I'm sorry.
Oh, well, just to go back to Ms. McConnell's idea of a compromise, she, I think, said 25 feet. I mean, what about 20 feet? I guess, I feel a little claustrophobic of the idea of 10 feet only.
I can do 20 feet.
I can live with 20 feet.
Right.
Yeah, I think it's a good compromise.
Could everybody live with 20 feet for the tall, for the bigger buildings?
For over, over four, four stories and higher?
Uh, yes, anything greater than three, yes.
Yeah.
Ms. McConnell?
You're the body.
Okay, we're the body. So, Ms., I'm going to let you wordsmith this, Ms. Yoshimura, since you're the condo queen.
Not exactly. You're probably preferred label.
Right.
No, well, I haven't had dinner yet, so my blood sugar level's a little low.
All right, all right. I'll take a stab at it. Sorry, Karen. All right. So, in regarding case...
Oh, just that, just that paragraph.
Oh, just that paragraph. Oh, all right. So, the first sentence stands as written, and all portions of any taller building shall be separated by no less than 20 feet from any other building. Period.
Okay.
Well, no, you didn't get the 20 feet in there, did you?
Yes. Be separated by no less than 20 feet from any other building. Does that not do it?
I think, well, can you just leave it as it is and then add up to a maximum 20 feet at the very end?
Uh, all portions of any taller building shall be separated from any other building.
Uh-uh.
Hers is cleaner.
Okay. Cleaner's better.
Clearer, I guess I should have said.
You said by no less than 20 feet. Didn't you mean no more than 20 feet?
No.
No what?
No less than 20 feet. That's the minimum.
Okay.
Should we say, instead of using the term taller building, should we say...
Four stories.
Four stories, or buildings above three stories?
Um, that's fine.
I mean, I don't know if you want to...
Yeah, that's, that's...
I, I think that's good.
More specific.
Yeah, that's more specific.
Buildings above three stories?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Okay. I think somebody needs to read that last sentence from the beginning. Our secretary is never going to be able to piece your sausage roll there.
All portions of any building taller than three stories shall be separated from any other building by no less than 20 feet. Yes?
Bingo.
Okay. All right. Does everybody concur with that suggestion? Okay, good, good sausage making. I think we're done and ready to come out of the committee of the whole.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I just call your attention that we did make a change under B1, which wasn't part of the...
Yes, the two or more.
Two or more, we added that.
Right. I got that.
Okay.
Okay. So, somebody want to make a motion to come out of the committee of the whole?
So moved.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
And Mr. Aishen, is there any objection? Hearing none, we're back on the record. And now is the time when I need someone to go through and make a motion to adopt the specific actions of the commission acting as the committee of the whole.
Right.
I see you in the queue.
Madam Chair, in the case of 2010-037, Title 21 Rewrite Proposal for Site Condo Design Requirements, I make a motion to amend under the following items. A, B1, this section applies to the development of two or more principal residence, residential structures on a single lot.
Okay.
Uh, B3, developments shall be approved in accordance with Table 21.07-X. Development shall meet the maximum number of dwelling units for the review process. Administrative site plan review up to a maximum number of dwelling units of 15. Major site plan review by the Planning and Zoning Commission for all units over 15 units.
15 or above?
Yes, 16 and above.
Okay.
Which would amend 21.03.18C. And under C4, developer should make every effort to have designed and arranged, to have dwelling units designed and arranged in such a manner as to provide, and the remainder of the sentence stands. And E3, under building spacing, change the last sentence in that paragraph to read, "All portions of any building taller than three stories shall be separated from any other building by no less than 20 feet."
One quick clarification, let me. On item B1, you add a revision into the first sentence, and I assume you intend to retain the second sentence?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. And this motion has been seconded by Ms. Dean. And you may speak to your motion, Ms. Yoshimura.
Um, I feel that this proposal for site condo design requirements does a lot to assuage the feelings of the community as it relates to past development, past or development of site condominiums, but yet retains an affordability aspect for the private developer and builder. I support a public process for review of site condominiums, and I feel that this accomplishes that goal.
Okay. Any further discussion? Well, I would just offer, McConnell said it's been a long time in coming. This community needed this ordinance many years ago. But now, if it is finally adopted by the Assembly, we'll have a method of regulating the development in a reasonable fashion for the development of the site condos, and hopefully be able to continue to have some affordable workforce housing in our community. Is there any objection to the motion? Hearing and seeing none, that is passed. Are we done with Title 21 now?
I believe so.
We are done with it. Oh!
We're going to have withdrawal.
Congratulations, commissioners. This is a big day. Good job. Big job.
It's been a long...
It's been a long time. It's been many years. I am stunned.
We, we do need to keep, you know, don't hold your breath. It's got to pass the Assembly now.
I know.
All our work is not yet seen fruition.
I know, I know.
And Ms. McConnell's work, too.
I know. Well, I don't see any further business on our agenda. Do we have any announcements? Yes, Ms. McConnell?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Barrett asked me to read the following statement. The committee that Mr. Phelps signed up for, the school site selection committee, is going inactive. So Mr. Phelps and Mr. Aishem need to re-up for another committee.
He knew that.
I'm already on two committees.
Yes, he, yes, you are. Yes. And Mr. Phelps isn't here to hear your announcement. Mr. Whedleton?
I've got a quick one. Some of you got the Planning Commissioner's Journal. And what we did is the Planning Department used to get that for us, and then now they don't.
Did, did you pay for it for us?
Well, we did through me, but I was reimbursed by everyone, thank you. So, that was your last issue on that round. So if you want to do it again, it was just much cheaper. If you get it on your own, I forget, it was like $127 or something. Oh, no, six, six was $127, but I think if we did one, it was like 50 or something. So it's much cheaper to do more. So I'm glad to just be the one to order them for everyone and give them out again, if you tell me. It'd be $127 for six, so... Well, we could. I don't know if the new commissioners might want it, or the, I guess we need to check with everyone. But why not, I'll send out an email to everyone and just see who wants to do it.
How much is it a person?
Well, I don't, six is $127, but nine would be less.
Okay.
So what, let's wait, and I'll see how many people want to do it, and then we'll just split it up.
Yes. Okay. Anyone have any comments? Well, we do, do not have a meeting next week. We should have gotten an email saying it had been canceled because there were no cases. We will have a meeting with the director on the 27th at noon. A motion to adjourn would be in order.
So moved.
Second would be nice. Second? Thank you, Ms. Dean. Is there any objection? Hearing none, we're adjourned. Yes. You guys worked fast. Thank you. Oh, no, I got, have hiccups. Now, I think most of these got changed.